All right, I will go ahead and call the January Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Thank you very much for your attendance today. We do have a real recognition part. Echo, echo, I know. Just messing with the computer. And so we do have some important business to cover today and some recognition of some folks who are really working very well in the community, so we want to make sure that happens. But first, we always do the approval of the minutes. We start on page four. There are no comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Cornard?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Metascho?
Aye. Thank you very much. There's some logistics involved, and so we're going to move up one of the items on the agenda to recognize Mr. Gresham. On up. And in honor of Mr. Gresham, I'm wearing a tie for the first time in a number of years. And I would like to thank him for doing that. This is crazy. Yeah.
He has done this all along, he forgot what's on next.
That's right.
Actually, the coach run.
Yes, Ms. Cornard will read the resolution.
Resolution of gratitude to Richard Gresham for services rendered as Commissioner of Norfolk redevelopment and housing authority. Whereas Richard Gresham has served as a member of the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Norfolk redevelopment and housing authority, the Authority, since November 2017. Whereas throughout his tenure on the Board, Richard has demonstrated a strong commitment to the Authority's mission of providing decent, safe, affordable housing, as well as related essential services for the citizens of Norfolk. Whereas Richard has served as an advocate for the residents of NRHA's community and a passionate voice for the equitable treatment of such residents regardless of race, age, or economic circumstance. Whereas Richard's foundation in development was obtained by working for the E.T. Gresham Company founded by his grandfather in 1916. His 55-year career in construction brought valuable insights to the Board and was instrumental in assisting the Board to better guide and address development and finance matters to provide greater accommodations for all of NRHA's residents. Whereas Richard has consistently carried out his responsibilities as Commissioner with dedication, perseverance, and pragmatism, always serving as a voice of reason and approaching every issue with integrity and an open mind. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of the Authority, do hereby take this opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for Richard's service to the Authority and his many contributions to the Board. Be it further resolved that the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of the Authority is hereby directed to provide a copy of this resolution to Richard Gresham and cause a copy of said resolution to be placed on record in the Office of the Authority. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second. Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Metascho?
Aye. And again, Dick, thank you so much for your service and really do appreciate all of the things that you've done for this agency and the city as well.
Thank you.
Have a great, have a great new job. Thank you very much. You all are immensely generous. Thank you. I do appreciate it. All right. Stay safe.
I will.
If you all were to choose this.
Okay.
I have to leave.
Thank you.
I'll lose time. I had to get the video of how to do that. Okay, thank you very much, folks. We will now... Watch me cuss at the computer. We go ahead and open our public comments.
We're going to do the...
Oh, the boys and girls. Boys and girls first.
Yeah.
Again. Come on up.
Sure. Thanks.
We're having a presentation about the Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern Virginia. We have a partnership, so please come up.
Good morning, everyone. I'm happy to announce our partnership, the Housing Authority's partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern Virginia. And just to provide some background of how this partnership came about, it was, I think it was the early part of last year when we found out that the city, for whatever reason, they were actually doing the programming for Young's Terrace and Grandy Village. And we were notified that they were, due to whatever reason, they were, they were no longer able to provide the programming and the recreation facility. So Kim did a great job finding out at the last minute, right before, right before the summer, she did a great job trying to pull whatever resources that she could together to be able to at least provide some services for the residents, for the children of residents in those respective communities. Then it was around, if y'all recall that, the article that came out about the Housing Authority being a dire strait, which we weren't, it was just something that we used, you know, saying that if we continue the way we're doing. So I think it was, just a little aside of that, it was around, when that article came out and Scott can attest to this, we started getting calls from what I'd like to call loan sharks, basically, they were going to help us. They were going to help us take care of our bills for, matter of fact, there was a guy from everybody's cousin's house from Brooklyn. He was going to take care of all of our bills, but we sort of passed on that. But I think it was around that time, Kevin, you can, you can refresh my memory, but I think it was around that time, I think you had called, you had called or whatever, it's a little fuzzy, but I think we, you had, we contacted each other then, and you had mentioned, I think there was another neighborhood that y'all were looking at, and then you read the article and mentioned something about, you know, the situation we're in, but then y'all had this opportunity for this other neighborhood that probably didn't really need the services, and you said that, hey, you know, I hear what's going on in Young's Terrace and Grandy Village, but this is where, this is where our core mission is, and I really want to do what I can to help you all carry out the recreational services and programming needs for those communities. And from, ever since then, we, you know, we tried to work something out, Kim, Mike, myself, Scott, Delphi, and then Kevin's team, and we've been working out, and we finally came to an agreement last week where we signed off on the MOU lease. So here we are, and we're looking forward to grand opening sometime in the spring. Now look, Kevin, you can share anything that you'd like. Share with them.
Thank you, my dear Ron, and thank you guys for having me. Can everyone hear me? I don't have the mic, no. So as Ron said, my name is Kevin Willem, the President and CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Southeast Virginia. Currently, we have eight clubs in Hampton Roads, anywhere from all the way to the eastern shore, all the way up to Franklin, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Suffolk, and Portsmouth. And our mission is to enable all young people, and this is what I like the most about this partnership, especially those that need it the most, to enable young people to become caring, productive, responsible citizens. So that's the canned phrase, but the Boys and Girls Club is, you know, a great convenor for a community, not only for the youth, but for those families to get involved in kids' everyday lives. So we run after-school programs. We like to stay open at Southeast Virginia a little bit later than most after-school programs. We try to stay open until seven or eight, depending on the communities, because we know most of our families are not nine-to-five workers, and if anyone's ever been struggling to pick up their kid by six or they get charged extra, you know, we know that pain point. So we try to stay open a little bit later. And then in the summer, we provide services for kids all day. And we provide meals. And when most people are familiar with Boys and Girls Clubs, they think that immediately, you know, they think of the families, people that have been through Boys and Girls Clubs, whether it's actors or sports field, they know it's a safe place for kids to go after school and in the summer to play hoops. We run our own flag football leagues or, and we have our own E-Teams, video games, you know, those to me are just kind of the carrots to get the kids into the war. But what makes us different is our dedication to programming. And you'll see in the annual report, all the programs that we do run with kids throughout the year, and they all center around our three pillars, which are good character and citizenship, academic success, and healthy lifestyles. And those programs are fun and interact, but, you know, in order to play the basketball, the video games, or all the field trips that we take kids on, they have to go through these programs, and it really just teaches them and gives them that foundation. Another great thing about Boys and Girls Clubs is, like I said, it's a, it's really a conduit to partnerships, not only in those communities, but throughout Hampton Roads, they'll come in and enhance our programs, or really just give kids new experiences. So I wanted just to open it up to any questions about Boys and Girls Clubs. There's tons of stats in there. What makes us different and I don't want to bang on the why or parts and brackets, really our dedication to be true youth development professionals. So we go through a lot of training. We don't just hire anybody off the street that come in and sit with your kids, it's not an 18-year-old or 16-year-old kid that's making minimum wage, that are running our programs and inspiring our kids. True youth development professionals and a dedication to that and the training that goes along with it. I think maybe some of the other questions you have is safety, so we take safety very seriously. Not only physical safety, we are one of the first ones in the nation to have all of our clubs do a outside audit on safety. So they go to each of our clubs, look at our clubs, give us some recommendations on how it could be safer for our kids. But emotionally as well, we know that our kids now more than ever need that support system, so we do a lot of training on how to identify that. We're not counselors, but we do know how to react when we see something in the community. But really, it is a big family, a great place for, to get involved in kids' lives, and it's a great place for kids to grow up. We take, you know, tons of field trips during the year, whether that's bush gardens, we usually take all the kids throughout the organization to fish every year, and they get their own poles, so we teach them how to fish, they get to keep the pole, and hopefully they'll continue that. You know, just things like that, and there's tons of them, Chrysler glass blowing class that our kids get, and, I mean, there are just so many, I probably couldn't hit them all, and I don't want to take up the whole board meeting, but I do want to give them a few minutes if you guys have any questions for me about Boys and Girls Clubs, what we do. Yeah, back?
Yeah, another question, I just want to give you a shout out, because I was a couple of Boys and Girls Clubs, and I was a positive, so I like what you're doing, I love what you're doing, and hopefully you can continue to get the funding, keep doing it. We as a community just appreciate what you're doing.
Oh, thank you, yes. And when we open, come by the club, or you come by one of our other clubs, anytime you want, and just be our role model for the kids, we love that.
I'm sure you probably could use volunteer, how do people volunteer?
So yeah, all of our information is in there, so we do have a volunteer coordinator. They, of course, would have to go through a background check.
So I'm sure for anybody, for example, people listening online, you know, they're listening to this meeting, how can they volunteer if they're?
Oh, sure, I didn't even realize it was on TV. So, I mean, they can contact us at the office, but we really have opportunities for everyone, no matter what your talents are, to come in, whether you're passionate about coming and helping kids with art, they love that, whether it's just coming in and volunteering for Power Hour, and that's helping kids with homework, my expertise probably stops about third grade that I can help with homework, knowing the new math and everything. But, you know, if it's sports, come get involved in our basketball, our flag football league. If it's financial literacy, we run programs on that as well, if, you know, coming in and doing those sort of programs and lending your expertise to the community, or just coming and helping, we have community nights, we have parent tonight, daddy-daughter, mother-son dances, things of that nature, so...
And do you post those events on social media?
We do.
Okay. Because I'm looking in the booklet, which obviously everybody doesn't have, but it says that you're on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, and then if you want to volunteer, it says you can email volunteer@bgcfa.org.
So, thank you for that. I didn't know that, I didn't know you were looking for the actual website.
But I figured, like I said, anybody could do that.
Thank you so very much. And I'd like to add, being a beneficiary of the Boys and Girls Club when I was growing up, and I could personally attest to the great programming that they had, and I'm sure some of you all have had that opportunity too, but it was very vital, especially in terms of my development and growing up in the neighborhoods that I grew up in, that that resource was there. So I can personally attest to the great things that the Boys and Girls Club does for the youth in our community.
So we're so excited to work with the team to get these centers open as soon as possible. I don't think we're quite ready to have a launch date yet, but we are 100% sure that this will happen for the community. We want to get into the community, we've already started interviewing to hire youth development professionals, but I encourage anyone from those communities as well to apply to those positions.
And I'd also like to acknowledge, right, Commissioner White, who was instrumental in making sure that we got this thing done. He stayed on us once, and that was part of the, once we came together, we didn't want it just to be amongst the administrators, so during that process, we wanted to make sure we reached out to the communities that the Boys and Girls Club would be in before we actually finalized everything, wanted to hear from everyone. And part of that was reaching out to Grandy Village, where Ray Trina's also serves as the TMC. But he wanted to make sure we got it done, and we wanted to make sure we got it done as well. So thank you.
Yeah, we look forward to opportunities to, you know, before we even open, to come and visit those communities and visit with them and just talk about the programs and what we can offer kids in those areas we serve. So, any other questions? I can't thank you guys enough for having me, it was, I always love talking about Boys and Girls Clubs, so hopefully it doesn't go too long, right? I don't know if we made it brief, but there is the annual report there, and my information should be in there as well, so if anybody wants to call and talk offline about, you know, the partnership or the programs, please, give me a call, but thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ron. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Kim.
Well, again, it's some real-world activities, isn't just something on paper or a thought, we ought to do this, you guys are actually doing things. I really do appreciate that.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to do our best.
Okay, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you. You're picking me up, right?
It's not because you're a Steelers fan.
Thank you, my buddy. I'm sure we'll be talking.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, that's particularly relevant now that there's quite a bit of news about children, negative news about children. So this is clearly one avenue for that road to success, so I really do appreciate that. Again, I will now open the public comments period. Again, members of the public may be able to speak, we'd like to keep it to three minutes, please identify yourself, excuse me, by name and address, and please give us the specific item on the agenda that you want to speak about, and so we'll now open that up.
Mr. Head, we have two people registered, Mr. Carl Poole from 1049 West 49th Street. The topic he would like to address is the standard of maintenance, and he's representing the New Virginia Majority. The second speaker that registered is Jafon Bennett from 1342 Rutherford Avenue, also representing the New Virginia Majority.
All right, Mr. Poole, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to tell you a little bit where I live at before I go into talking about what's going on with maintenance for folks in Young's and in Calvert. I live in a one-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment that's cost me $700 a month. It is not the best, it's maybe half the age of what you see those buildings out in those two neighborhoods, but maintenance is a problem continuously, but I don't worry about that. I don't worry about it because I know that if I have a problem going for maintenance, I got an app on my phone, I can tap in what's wrong, I can show them pictures of it, it even has, I think it shows you video if it's a problem that's ongoing, so they can have a good view of what's happening. There's a little box you can tap on that app to state whether you want, if they're allowed them to come into your apartment when you're not home. You can even schedule a time for when you want them to come and do the maintenance, whether during a day and a time, whether it's evenings or mornings. It's simple, and the good thing about it is, they will actually show up at that time. I never have to worry about maintenance, I know they're coming, and if there's something that's more involved going on, they'll call me, or they'll email me, or they'll text me, let me know what else needs to get done. Some things I don't even have to worry about past maintenance, they come once a month on the second Wednesday at 11 o'clock, every month. They were there yesterday, I told them, don't worry about it, they'll come back on, you know, February 8th at 11 o'clock, because I know that's the standard time that they'll come. Simple, easy, I hardly ever think about it, and even though it is not the best building, windows break, refrigerators break, I have leaks all the time, but I know they'll respond, and they'll respond easily. You know, if, and if a private owner or a private company can master the logistics of maintenance, then with all the talent in this room, with all the brain power in this room, why haven't you? When you go to Calvert, when you go to Young's and talk about maintenance with the residents, there's a common refrain, I have to call over and over and over again to get something fixed. This thing happens every year, it never gets fixed. I don't know when anyone from maintenance is coming. The best way I can get anyone to respond to maintenance isn't so much they call me or text me or email me, it's I go down to the office and I yell at people. Imagine how stressful your day gets if you have to have a constant problem or constant problems in where you live at, and the only way you can get anybody to respond is to go to an office and argue, fuss, and fight about the basic stuff that should be the standard. Now, what you're going to see very soon is a list of New Year's resolutions, six items. I'm only going to go with three of them, because I want you to focus on that right now. One, that if anyone has emergency maintenance in those two neighborhoods, you respond within 24 hours, non-emergency maintenance within 72 hours. That you create a system, it doesn't have to be an app, it could just be something online, that you can either give means for residents to report maintenance, so they can keep track of what's going on with it, and that you email them, or that you text them, or that you call them to let them know the status of their maintenance. Also, if there's an issue with your short workers, create a program that'll take residents, train them on basic maintenance and certify them, and then hire them to cover any shortfall. I mean, my, like I said, don't live in the best building, I don't really have the best rental company, I've had better places to live at, but they master logistics when it comes to fixing things in the building, even though it's not the best. You all, you all have stronger backgrounds in doing this than they do, and like I said, you're more talented and have more brain power than they do. A private company like the one I rent from shouldn't have you beat at that, and you shouldn't have so many residents in two different neighborhoods screaming about how much everybody else that does private renting in the company has you beat. These are the basics, standard of maintenance you see in private rental companies throughout Norfolk. People in Young's and Calvert should have the same standard, they shouldn't have to worry about this. This should be, okay, let me call somebody, let me get on the app, let me find out when they're coming, not, this is never going to get fixed, I know it's never going to get fixed, I can call a million times and it's never going to get fixed. That's a direct quote from a resident in Calvert. There's a standard here that you're missing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Sorry, I didn't remember your name. Yeah, come on up.
Excuse me, Chair, can you call in, or can we not? I wanted to address something about that matter.
Go ahead.
I forgot your name, what's your name, Mr. Poole? Mr. Carl, Mr. Poole. I've been to Calvert and I've been to Young's in the last month. There's a young man at Young's, name is Mike, but he transferred over there from another neighborhood. There were 50 to 60 work orders, and in one month, he got it down to 10. So I don't know the information that you're getting, and once again, I gave you all my number, please give me a call. I just left Calvert yesterday, and the maintenance men over there are working very diligently, actually, they're laying there, that seems to have, are meeting accommodations, and we're working on that today. So if there are any questions of any residents that you know about, tell them, please give me a call, because they are working every day in Young's and Calvert.
I can appreciate that, Mr. White, and I was in Calvert yesterday, in fact, I've been in Calvert and Young's going through it for the past few weeks, talking to residents about their maintenance problems. They want to know why there's hot water leaking out of the ground in the building in Young's, or why they have to boil six pots of water in order to get the baths, because their hot water isn't working. They want to, you know, they want to know why the refrigerator that was reported to be broken sometime in October is still having problems and only had one person come by. Also, I have seen the maintenance workers out in Calvert and Young's, some of them are, you know, working diligently in their, wherever they're going for buildings, they're refurbishing empty buildings, some of them are just chilling the sheets in empty buildings, because I've knocked on the doors and I've seen them through the windows, and they go, oh, this is an empty building, and I knocked two or three times to wake them up. So maybe I should go ahead and make sure they have your number, so that as they have your problem, they call you directly.
Absolutely, that's what I will ask you to do, please, and you have my number, and we'll get the appropriate people to take care of that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Tim.
Jafon Bennett, New Virginia Majority, to speak on maintenance, if y'all think it's just residents, or just one resident getting one issue and it's not everybody else, that's kind of absurd. The head of maintenance over there in Young's is Mike Hearn, his number is 667-1782, so y'all don't believe us, y'all can hear from the maintenance people's mouth, they actually have to agree, yeah, there's a problem, things are not getting done, et cetera, et cetera, because we can talk about having to sit down, so to dismiss or refute what he's saying is kind of, is kind of crazy to me, but let me get on to what I was saying. There are jobs that throughout life we just take for a paycheck, and this still that we all play a part in here, isn't, well, shouldn't be one of them, because these are people whose lives are at stake. Officers shouldn't be an officer, they don't care about crime, adopters shouldn't be adoptive, they don't care about saving lives, and we as a whole shouldn't be working for the citizens of Norfolk if we don't care about the black folks in Norfolk. New Virginia Majority is in the community, in the community because we care. NRHA needs to be in the community because it's their job, and they should care. Now with any job, if you don't meet a certain criteria, termination follows, and with Ron Jackson at the helm, black folks will continue to suffer as they did when he was in Hampton. NRHA has done absolutely nothing to combat the violence, and violence has actually gotten worse. So what is the threshold you guys are held at? Is it zero to bare minimum? Is that what keeps y'all jobs? I might as well apply and get paid to do absolutely nothing as well. And what bothers me is when my colleagues talk to your head of security and other city figures on a solution to help residents feel finally safe and secure by suggesting car towers, and you guys are meeting with resistance, doubt, dismissal, and lies. So I ask of you, what suggestions do y'all have? What are the alternatives, because violence has been gradually increasing for 40 years and nothing has been done? Instead of being ignorant, how about being optimistic and say to yourself, how do we know it's not going to work unless we try? Because clearly the effort NRHA has given hasn't been the answer since these neighborhoods have been built. If it don't work, at least you guys finally can give residents an opportunity of feeling like you care, but if it works, it works. You guys have $10,000 to spare for one car tower, we asked for 10, but I would do, one would do for a trial and error assessment, besides, you have constantly took money from Norfolk and invested elsewhere, how about we finally do what's right by the same people you are supposed to represent? I would like to say, as I stated before, I'm not here to be truckling, I'm just one change, and I'm more than willing to have a sit-down with all of y'all to further discuss this process, and we have a petition for you guys to keep that highlights the residents' demand in St. Paul's. Again, we here for solutions, we here to work with y'all, not against y'all, but when you met with resistance and constant dismissal of what we're saying, like what we're saying is not true when we in the community every day, it doesn't make any sense. It makes it look like, oh, y'all don't care, or y'all right, and everybody else is wrong. We are literally with the residents every day. I'm walking down towards the bus stop every day, there's a group of guys, they say these guys are bad for the community, these adolescents, there's no hope for no future, every day I walk by, they ask me, hey, do you have a job for me? Do you have a job for me? We have nothing to do out here. So it's not like these kids are bad, they really don't have no money, they have no god... So it's not like these kids are bad. They really don't have no money. They have no guidance. They have nothing to do. They'll give them something to do, put a little money in their pocket, to watch the crime go down. But until that happens, these call towers is, is an alternative for, for any, any safety measures. It's been working throughout the, throughout the United States. Why we can't just try it once? That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone online?
Chair, we don't have anybody online right now, but I will check.
Please, thank you.
And no one is present.
All right, then I will go ahead and call the public comment period to a close. And we will now pick back up with, I guess, uh, resolutions?
Procurement policy.
Yeah, the procurement policy.
Right.
Yep, yeah.
And Ms. Mosley, come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy New Year. I am here this morning to present the resolution to amend the procurement policy to increase the micro purchase threshold from five thou- from three thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. Um, right now, the micro purchase threshold is three thousand dollars.
Just, just, that, that's on page seventeen in your packet, just so everybody knows. Thank you.
And then just to let you know, on the actual resolution item, um, the micro purchase threshold says five thousand dollars, but it's actually three thousand dollars. So we're increasing the micro purchase threshold from three thousand dollars to ten thou- ten thousand dollars. That gives the agency an opportunity to award at one, um, one quote, award to SWAM, Section Three, any minority vendors that we have. So it's just an opportunity to increase business for our minority in Section Three business contractors. So with this, I recommend that the, we adopt the resolution to amend the NRHA statement of procurement policy to increase the micro purchase threshold from three thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars.
Questions, comments? All right.
I'd like to, I'd like to know the, uh, practical, uh, what's, what's the practical, uh, outcome of that? What's, you know, can you kind of give us
Yes.
an example of how, what, what that impacts and what the practical impact is?
Im- immediately, one of the, the issues that we are having is, uh, unit turn. And right now, we-
What was that?
Unit turn.
Okay.
Um, where we have a multitude of unit turns, up to probably fifty or sixty unit turns. This gives us the opportunity to solicit a lot of the micro per- a lot of the small vendors and contractors that we have to do this work immediately. We're having a huge problem just getting these contractors. Um, this smaller, uh, this higher threshold gives us the opportunity to award to one contractor as opposed to competing against four, which is the small purchase threshold.
And unit turn, you mean getting a partner ready for occupancy?
Yeah.
Fixing the thing that broke and getting it where that's, uh, basic level of occupancy.
Yeah, so that we can occupy.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You ready?
Um, I'm sure that you guys do this, but, um, essentially we can track this to see if this change does in, and will, um, uh, more opportunity for, you know, minorities, small business, um, so, I mean, it'd be nice to have a benchmark and actually see it.
Absolutely. And actually, with, um, Aaron Harris, the Economic Opportunities, one of the things that he does and reports is Section Three, uh, in minority contracting. Um, so we can track this and track the expense of it. Um, Section Three tracks labor hours, so we are actually looking at the hours that we do use with the minority contractors.
I, I do really interesting after, you know, six months or so to-
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I have a question. Um, in Grandy Village, there are some contractors come out, small contractors, and, uh, they were very professional and nice, and it turned over, actually, it was two houses after me, that they came in, the people, regular cars came in and cleaned and actually fixed the place, and it was ripped. I went inside of there and I could not believe in a short period of time what they had done. And it's really, I asked the lady, can I get a car? She, uh, I've cleaned some of my stuff, but they were really nice people and very respectful before, and they said, can we park our car here? And I'm sectioned where it's private parking.
Yeah.
So I think that, um, for that, um, I think it's a good idea to have some of the small businesses to get a piece of the pie.
We've actually created a, a vendor application that is a little more specific to the trades that they do. And we're sending these applications out to a lot of the minority contractors so that we can build a pool of contractors to choose from, so I think it will work.
All right, uh, entertain a motion to do this?
A move.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Garnett?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Ms. Tuzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Masaccio?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
You do the same.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we have another resolution. Is that correct? On, uh, student housing project?
Yes, sir. Is, is it okay if I, thank you, as I'm maneuvering through the present system? Apologies. Um, you have in front of you a preview form and a resolution. This is an amendment to an existing bond project that's been in place, um, in, since two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen when we did the reinsurance. And this is really, um, something ministerial. It, it does not have any adverse impact on NRHA. This is just a change in, um, the due date on the payment of those bonds. The bank has already agreed, so this is to formalize that, uh, process. It's not going to cost any money to NRHA. This is just an ongoing project. Um, and as you can see from the preview form, the borrower had an option with regard to the purchase date, and they went forward and, uh, selected the February first, two thousand twenty-five date. So this will be the new mandatory purchase date on this financing. Again, this is not financing that comes from the housing authority itself. This is one of these transactions where NRHA was the conduit issuer of the bond. And so you have a resolution in front of you, and I'll be happy to entertain a motion. Um, Commissioner Purrier will recuse herself because of the sake of America's involvement.
So you're looking for a resolution?
A motion.
Motion?
Yes.
A move? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Ms. Tuzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Masaccio?
Aye.
And we'll note that Ms. Purrier is recusing herself. Thank you.
Okay, now we need the executive directors' report. And that starts on page forty-eight.
Um, one of the, uh, what I wanted to do is, uh, to go over the sort of the format. We changed the format to some degree. First of the, uh, of the agenda, um, we, uh, have in, we included a, a recognition section in there. If you look at, you know, the way it compared to the way it was set up the last time, and that's where any types of recognition that we would have, hopefully, that will be a standing category. And then with the resolutions from now on, they're all going to be handled consecutively. So the resolutions have their own section. And then, uh, the part I wanted to talk about is the executive director reports. And if you had a chance to look at them, they're more graphic instead of narrative in nature. And that, to me, is important, and especially in consideration to what was said earlier during the public comments, that it is incumbent on us as a, as an agency and you as commissioners to know how we're performing, especially when it comes to terms of, in terms of, of housing operations. And, and one of the things that we're trying to do is create a dashboard, a tour. For example, when it comes to, uh, uh, for public housing, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, that we're occupying the units, that we should be, that, uh, units aren't sitting vacant. And on that, I think it's on, I don't know if the page number, but we go to housing operations.
Well, the, the new-
The new format?
New format starts on page forty-eight.
Yeah.
And you can see the-
Yeah, and then it, and it just gives you, it, it gives you a dashboard of where, where we should be. We haven't included everything, but just, just sort of give you an idea at a glance to see where we are. For example, uh, HUD has, uh, part of their strategic goal is to ha- make sure housing authorities stay at least at ninety-six percent, and we at, we're at ninety-five percent. And there could be a number of things that are the cause of that, but we, as, as the management, we need to make sure that the units are being, when, when they're vacated, that they're being turned in a reasonable amount of time, whether, you know, uh, so when they're, when they are turned, in, in a, uh, in a quick amount of time, or in a reasonable amount of time, that they're, that we have taken people off of the waitlist and units aren't sitting vacant. So this, this is sort of the information that you as a board need to, need to see, that the housing authority, or we as administrators are also servicing work orders in a timely manner. For example, on that, on that next page, I think, uh, emergency work orders were mentioned to make sure that we're doing those within twenty-four hour, uh, for our records. We're doing most of them, but we should be doing all of them. I don't know the reason why we didn't do the other ones. I don't know if it was just a, a, a timing issue, but we should be doing all of the emergency work orders within a twenty-four hour period. We're working on a, we're working on sort of the backend reporting to be able to do the regular work orders by community. So you as a board can see that we're, you know, when we get, when we open a work order, that they're being serviced in a reasonable amount of time. And then if all of that is done, and when the vacant becomes unit, like I said, that there, the unit turns are being done, maybe now that, you know, we raised the threshold, that we're able to, to, instead of going through this convoluted process, to getting contractors, that we can continue on to get the units turned around in a reasonable amount of time, and that we're pulling people off of the waitlist, and people aren't sitting needing housing in the waitlist because we can't get our acts together. But all those things HUD are hold, HUD is holding us and especially the board responsible. So those kind of indicators to see, to let you all know that we're doing what we should be doing as housing administrators, whether it's public housing or Section Eight, you as commissioners need to see that on a monthly basis. And we need to have goals in terms of, for example, like was mentioned before, we, yeah, we do need to have goals in terms of how long it takes us to turn around, uh, uh, work orders. And so those are the things that we want to be able to, to show to you all on a monthly basis, so you can hold the agency accountable to make sure that we're doing what we should be doing in terms of our housing operations and administration of our public housing programs, as well as what we're doing in terms of collecting rent and, uh, uh, as well as our finances too, which we're going to be doing. We're going to be presenting that information to you on a quarterly basis. So these are the things that HUD is judging us by. And if you're, if you see that some of the housing authorities that are in troubled status, they come after the board because it's the board's response, it's the board's fiduciary responsibility. It's their responsibility to provide, to, to have some oversight on the housing operations to make sure that the citizens, that the housing authority is serving, that they're being serviced in a, in a professional and, and, uh, in a expeditious manner. So as the month goes on, you're going to be seeing, as the month, months go on, you're going to be seeing more indicators that we're able to get from our IT system to be able to show you, and then also have standards that we need to get at. So you can ask questions if we're not meeting those thresholds. Uh, and then there's some additional information, but those are the really the most, I would say, the most critical things that we're trying to be able to show to you on a monthly basis, yes.
Um, like this, as you're clear and, um, you know?
Yes, yes.
Um, I'm wondering if under reason for a change in the news-
Yes.
May we add additions, please?
Oh, okay. Yes. Yes. We'll make sure to do that. Okay.
You can see that we, we, so I don't know.
Yes, we'll do, okay.
Thank you.
We can make sure to do that. Um, same thing goes for Housing Choice Voucher Program. At least you'll get an idea of, you know, the, the overall program, who we're serving, the number of vouchers, the cost of the program, some of those things you could see. And there's also some indicators that HUD has for the Housing Choice Voucher Program that we also would like to put in here to make sure that we're doing what we should be doing in terms of the goals that we're supposed to meet per HUD standards. And we'd like to be able to include that, uh, in there as well. Eventually, we'd also like to include, and this is, this also goes to transparency, because the worst thing that could happen to a board is be surprised by something that you should, that HUD is going to hold you accountable for knowing what goes on with the housing authority, and that's our development operations as well. We're going to, we're going to try to add those in a, in a format so you see the projects that are out in the field, what we're doing, how we're progressing, if there's any issues out in the field. And those things are important too. Uh, and, but anyway, you just, you know, you just get a sense of what we're trying to sort of distill all the narrative information that we've been giving you in the past, that you can really see what we're doing performance-wise in terms of housing operations and how, what we're doing to servicing the residents. And there's a number of things that we can distill down to this level that you can see. I mean, even in, probably in, in, in our, uh, in our resident services in terms of how many people we see, some of the outcomes and things like that. So we'd like to get as much information on here so that you as a board can see, as well as the community can see, of what, what the housing authority is doing in terms of performance and service their residents.
One other question, uh-
Yes.
Not given at all.
Yes.
Do you have part there, how many vacancies we have in those housing and, or around those housing that we have not, have not occupied?
Yeah, that's what, the only, the, the indicator that can tell you that right now, we're still getting that information. But the occupancy means that we're, uh, that we're, we should be, really, it should be as close, as close to one hundred as possible. So we're saying that the number that we have now, that five percent of our units aren't occupied.
Right.
And that's a large, that's a large amount.
So are we going to see which neighborhoods?
Yeah, we're going to be able to try to break it down to identify which, which areas. I mean, that's the goal. And like I said, this is the first, sort of our first, uh, attempt at trying to get it down to this level so you can be able to see. But that's what we eventually want to be able to get to. So you as a board, we need to know as management so we can address the issue. For example, even like, uh, I know, uh, Mike and I had talked about, well, what are some of, what are some of the reasons why we're not at ninety-six percent? And I know he talked with his folks, and it turns out that, uh, some of it is just miscommunic- miscommunication, which, you know, it's still not acceptable when it comes to, we have vacant units that have been turned and they're sitting empty. That's unacceptable. So those are the kind of things, when we start thinking along those lines of terms of, are we meeting the marks that we should be? And if we're not, then that gives us, that should be our charge to be able to find out what, what process is in place or what processes need to be in place in order to make sure that we're serviced, we're getting the vacant units, uh, occupied.
I, I would like to see, depending on the board, we'd like to see that also, if we're doing it quarterly or every month, even the success story.
Yes.
We have, um, new ownership, we have three houses just closing, ownership, um, Young Terrance has-
Right.
Five vacant, uh, um, vacancy, nine vacant seats, uh, units that can come in.
Okay.
So it has to be the process-
Yeah.
Uh, how the system is working.
Yeah, so that's what we're, that's what we're hoping to get to.
Okay.
That, uh, that's our goal. But I just, the reason why we put it in here just sort of to get you sort of, that's, that's the goal of where we're, you know, where we're going in terms of being able to report to the board. And also, it's important that the public is aware of it too in terms of what we're doing. And ultimately, this is what we're judged by as the housing authority when it comes to HUD. As far as what they, what they consider to be well-run up, uh, housing authorities are the ones that aren't. as far as what they, what they consider to be well-run up, uh, housing authorities are the ones that aren't well-run.
Good.
Okay, and then the, the last, I, I just wanted to bring up, I, there was a, uh, it's the, uh, proposed BLC committees. I forget what, that's on there, because I know Don and I have been talking about that since we're in the process of sort of reconstituting the, uh, committees around the, the goals that are coming out of the strategic plan. And these are some of the proposed committees. We, we still haven't come up with any, any time, you know, any timeframes or things like that. But I know that some of the, some of the committees, we're going to need to be able to call, like the Budget and Finance Committee, because we're starting to talk about some things related to the budgets. Um, the Community Engagement Safety Committee, I mean, it's still in the draft form, but, uh, some of, uh, one of these committees, and I think it's going to be the Community Engagement Committee, that, that's the one where we're actually going to be, that's part of our outreach to the community on a monthly basis, where we go out to the communities. And, uh, I think it was under the Housing and Safety, it was Housing and Safety before, where we went out, uh, commissioners went out to the communities. And we're, we think that's going to be really important, whether, you know, if we get the other one started. But that one, we need to get started right away. And my idea is that, uh, previously it was served by, you know, two commissioners, but I think it's really important that each commissioner have the opportunity to be able to go out to the community. So the idea would be that it would be, it would be served on a rotating basis. So each commissioner, two commissioners will be able to go out. When the meetings are set out in the communities, we'd have two commissioners on a rotating basis to be able to go out to the communities with our safety and security and our community engagement folks to be able to, uh, interact with the, with the community. But we're, we're still, we're still working on it, but I'm, I, I know Karen and Kim can talk about, you know, what, what are the next steps in terms of being able to set, uh, set up one of the community meetings. I don't know if you had a schedule for this or something that we could, uh, uh, update the board on? If y'all have anything, any, do we have anything scheduled yet? Okay. Well, I'll get back to y'all on that in terms of what, what would be our next scheduled neighborhood. And then we'll ask what members would want to be able to do that hopefully. Hopefully for, we're probably set, uh, February, we have February, we'll have something set up so that committee can start it. And then we'll work with, on the other committees, that we could at least have some initial meetings on, you know, how that's going to look. And not that they necessarily have to meet every, not each one has to meet every month. For example, we had the Development Committee, and it was just basically as needed, and we were able to call them together. But we just need to work out some of the, some of the details on that. But it's, they're still going to be affiliated with a specific, uh, strategic plan goal, so they can, so the board can actually monitor in terms of any action plans and things related to those goals that they're being, that they're being implemented.
Right, good. And now, uh, Mr. Thomas, will you kind of let us know the annual plan, uh? Schedule.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Thomas.
Uh, I would just wanted to come to you today to advise you and for those who've been here a while, remind you and for our new commissioners, um, just update you that we are beginning the process for our annual plan. So the Department of Housing and Urban Development, uh, through the Quality Housing and Work Responsibility Act of nineteen ninety-eight requires that all public housing authorities, uh, produce an annual and/or five-year plan. This plan is intended to be basically the playbook for the housing authority for the next one to five years. It is a plan of both anticipated projects as well as things that are set in stone that we know we need to have happen or need to have updated. This process takes a few months, and it does involve both staff, community partners, as well as residents. The process begins with us, uh, displaying the draft plan. You will see the draft plan, uh, which will be open for public comment and review a forty-five day period. That will be live and active as of February the first. We will post that on social media, on our website, as well as local newspaper, uh, or local, local newspaper outlets and, uh, other common, commonly used, uh, outlets throughout the Norfolk, throughout the city of Norfolk. Again, this is a forty-five day period that allows folks in general to provide input, suggestions and updates on what they feel should be considered as we move forward in addressing the new year's plan. This also involves strong resident involvement as part of the Resident Advisory Board. The Resident Advisory Board will begin meeting at the end of January. January twenty-third will be the first meeting. It will be a four-meeting process, meeting every two weeks on Monday afternoon. We will be in, excuse me, Monday evening. We will be inviting NRHA staff to present proposed updates to the Resident Advisory Board for feedback and comment in years past. And as we can all attest, we have a commissioner who's been very vocal in our Resident Advisory Board in the past. These, these comments are taken seriously. In many cases, it has changed the trajectory of projects and programs. And in other cases, it has allowed us to take some time to take a step back and be retrospective in what we've done and better ways to do it. We involve the residents, not because it's, it's the check-the-box situation, but because we are affecting resident lives, and we take that very, very seriously. Last year, we did begin, um, offering the opportunity for other community partners to come into the meeting to, uh, give, uh, updates and suggestions and proposals to the Resident Advisory Board. I did extend an invitation today to one of our community partners, and we'll be reaching out to two others so that they will be involved in one of those four meetings to have their face time in front of residents as well. We want to always present all sides of the, uh, opportunities that exist. So January through March, we will conduct the Resident Advisory Board meeting. Uh, we will have a formal public comment and a formal public meeting at our March, uh, Red Board of Commission, following our March Board of Commissioners meeting. And in April, I will come back to you with a resolution and review and, uh, and approval of the final draft of the annual plan that is likely to be submitted to HUD. The due date would be on, uh, before April fourteenth. So I will pause here to entertain any questions or comments.
One more question is, um, is your new plan of picking the committee for, um, this board that will be interviewing and deciding what the plan should be for the annual plan or something?
So we will maintain the, the, the plan that we have, we use for the last probably four or five years, which is we automatically appoint all presidents of all resident councils. So the tenant management councils is red, as well as the resident advisory committees in the mid-rises. The president of each of those councils is automatically appointed to the Resident Advisory Board. In addition, I held an open application period from October through December of twenty twenty-two asking, uh, any other residents of NRHA properties, including HCV participants, um, for, uh, the consideration of appointment to the Resident Advisory Board. We did get about three or four folks through the application process, and then we would be entertaining, I believe it's ten, uh, presidents from the actual resident council that are in place right now.
So the, so the presidents of some of the communities don't have a president. Are the management trying to recruit a resident to the board?
Yes, so that's where you come in with the application process, so that anyone who's not necessarily an elected member of the resident council, that he or she may participate still in that process. Um, and in the situation where a president of the resident council is not available to fulfill that obligation, that resident council board can elect a person or select a person to be appointed to the Resident Advisory Board to represent their community.
I have a recognition, I, I would like, I would be, if it makes this come to life, if there isn't, if there is a person of each neighborhood to be on it, if we got to recruit them and some kind of way to get them there. Every neighborhood have an opinion when it comes to this. It won't be a problem if people come up there, well, this neighborhood they know this, this neighborhood they know that. So maybe we can get that like a rally for, to get someone from each neighborhood to be on it?
And I think where we are now, Mr. White, to be honest with you, there is only one neighborhood. And we can talk offline about who that is. I think you might be very helpful and influential, maybe in that finding someone in that one neighborhood. But as of today, it looks like we have somebody from all of our resident, uh, council organizations, from all mid-rises, as well as family communities. And I believe I have three participants from HCV who are interested in being a part of the Resident Advisory Board. So just one community that we have left. Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Other comments, questions?
There's ten formatting questions. In the past, I think you all have done a great job, um, in, in presenting a plan of, um, highlighting, of pulling out the sub-sections, what are significant differences or, um, what are changes? So, which I found to be very helpful.
Yes.
If I can put that back early in the process.
Yes.
Because, uh, these plans are long and, um, is bureaucratic, um, with a lot of boilerplate. And, and so for me, and I'm hoping maybe, I think for other folks, if you want to read this and say, what's the?
Right.
What is this? What's the, what's this mean?
So.
Pull out those highlighted changes.
I'm crossing my fingers, toes and eyes, that this year, when you see the draft copy go out for public comment and review, that we will actually just redline, um, some of the proposed changes and see where they fall. So you're not flipping through the plan that, in some years, it's two hundred pages.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not just flipping through the plan and trying to figure out what's being proposed as a change or an update, but you can actually see where changes and updates are being suggested, suggested or made. So February first, that draft, that first draft that you see should actually have indications of where they, where we're tracking changes and we're showing the updates.
I'm always afraid of missing something significant.
Yes.
And I answer it, say, well, it's in the plan, in the line.
With page, right, I got you, understood.
Well, uh, just so the newer commissioners know, one of the reasons it's two hundred pages long is that HUD says, if you didn't tell us within the last five years that you were going to do it, you got to go through a really, really long process. So there are a number of things in there that are aspirational.
Right.
That we think we can do within the next five years. But if we don't put it in the plan and we want to do it, there's a much longer process with HUD. So again, you will see, the thing is literally two hundred pages long, but there's a reason for that. So that when we get to those things that are one, two, three, four years out, we don't have to go through a crazy process.
Right.
And I swear, I'll read all two hundred pages, you know, I'm not trying to shortcut this.
You can't sleep at night?
It's really, no, but it's really helpful to.
Yes.
You know, to.
Well, they, they, we did that with, uh, the changes in the procurement one. They.
Yeah.
Put the green highlight on it, the changes. So I'm sure there are ways, you know, capitalize, underline, you know, whatever, whatever says, look at this first.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Some of that, one question, are we resuming back to Ruffner Middle School or are we going back in person? I think that people want to come out to see some things or hear some things by not by telephone or email, by, by live person.
So I think the answer in, in what Mr. White is referencing is that we would normally do the March Public Comment or Public Hearing as a add-on to an evening Board of Commissioner meeting, rather a morning Board of Commissioners meeting. And I would honestly say, as I stand here, I don't think that's my decision to make. I think that's the board and probably working with Ron and, and Michael, uh, to talk through that process. We have it still tentatively as a morning march meeting, but given marching orders to do something different, we have enough time that we can do something different.
The difficulty with the Ruffner was, there's a pandemic and the school, but we're not allowing folks to come together. So, uh, but yeah, we can, we can certainly take a look at.
And that, please do not, let's be honest, yeah, me, I, we can't cut it out.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think that was part of the, the evening problem too.
Yes, you can't, yeah, I can't, I'm trying to, you say, well, it's, it caused things to be very brief.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Kim. We're now, uh, opening to commissioner comments, if there are any.
I, I just think, um, I really think we're, uh, the staff, and this got to be inverted, the staff is really, um, getting the picture now. I think they're really moving to the, to the mark of where we're, where we're trying to, trying to do. I just, just me as a commissioner, new commissioner and a resident for most of my life and to know the policies and the politics and all that stuff in the agency. I really think, Chairman and Vice Chairman, we're moving into the right direction. And I hope that we can take this roller coaster ride and keep going to the top. Um, I want to, um, to commend all of the employees that really work and the ones that try to work, um, but the ones that commit themselves to their job. I just want to let them know from me and hopefully from the rest of the board members that we tru- we truly value their work effort and their work commitment to this agency. Um, when, when back in the day, it just, it was just a circus. But now we're on a roller coaster ride to get to the right spot. So Chairman and Vice Chairman, I commend both of you all and definitely Mr. Ron Jackson for putting the roller coaster to push the gold to ride because I believe, um, it won't be tomorrow, it won't be next month, for the years to come, NRHA and Norfolk, that we all can get along, holding hands from the city and this agency, hand in hand, to go moving to, towards the mark of excellence of this agency, I feel it too.
Well, I think one of the things that, uh, shows our support to staff is the effort we do after the holiday in December, going out and, uh, various commissioners meeting individually with almost every employee. And so I think that, that does, uh, send a message that we appreciate the work that they do. So, yes, other comments? All right?
Well, I appreciate the, the comments and everything. And, um, this is something I've, uh, Don and I have talked about for, for a little bit, you know, in terms of my, uh, my, my career, my life and things like that. And, um, and, you know, I've come to the decision that, uh, effective the end of March will be my last, uh, my last day here at the authority. I've been here for three years, and it has been, as Ray Tron described, it has been a, a roller coaster ride. And it, you know, it, it gets to the point where the, you know, when you start, you start off gradual and then the, you know, the start to going down is longer than, you know, than going up. And then it gets to the point where, you know, you start ascending, the, the ascension is, is more so than, you know, going, going down. And so I, I, I feel good in the sense that that's where, that's where we're heading. We're heading in a good direction, everything is not, there's going to be bumps in the road and things like that. But I, I feel confident and really appreciative of the, the staff that's, that's here. I feel like the authority's in a good place. Um, I, uh, before, I, I, when I came up, I wanted to, I wanted to go back. I wanted to thank Joni for helping with the management reports. I forgot to ask, because she did a great job with the graphs. She did a wonderful job. I sort of was thinking along those lines of, but it's sort of in a, sort of in a small way, sort of emblematic of the way that we want to go anyway. Want to be able to, to be progressive and hold transparency and accountability. That's, that's where we want to go. And that, not only to the board, but to the people that, that we serve. And I think, you know, there were some, you know, starting off, and we were talking about the, we were talking about the, the public hearing meetings. And I remember the, I think I had only been here, uh, about a week, and we had the, the public hearing over at Ruffner. And then we didn't get through that because the city had shut down. And that was my first, that was my first, first week here at the authority. And then as first, you know, the first year and a half pretty much has been dealing, you know, with the pandemic. And, you know, just, it was really, I'm just really fortunate to have staff, really dedicated staff during that time that the first thing that they thought about, you know, they had their families and well-being to think about, but they were, uh, talking about, what do we need to do to continue the services despite, uh, our personal safety and things like that? What do we need to do to make sure that we continue on the services with, with our residents? And, you know, that was just typifies the, everything that I've been able to witness throughout my three years, both be three years at the end of February here. And so there, like I said. And so there, like I said, there've been a number of things. I'll have opportunity to sort of reminisce a little bit more. But I just wanted to go ahead and, you know, my, you know, it's mixed, with mixed feelings because you always want to sort of things that start, you want to, especially when they're going in the direction where everybody thinks that we should be going as an agency, that even throughout my career, I could at least say that I left it a little better than when, when I started. And I could say that for pretty much everywhere that I've served over my, you know, thirty years in this, in this industry. And, you know, I'll have ample opportunity to thank the staff and the support that I've had throughout the, the three years here, the support from the commissioners. You know, even, you know, things like the, you know, we, we just need to be mindful whether the, the, the comments are supportive or whether they're critical because we need to take them both and look, and look at ourselves. We just can't, can't serve in a vacuum. And we got to make sure that we're doing the right thing, whether we hear from the board, we hear from the residents or we hear from people who are our critics and what we do. We need to take it all and see where we are and see what we need to do in a realistic way. But anyway, like I said, I've still got a couple more months here. But I just wanted to go ahead and publicly announce that my last day here will be March thirty first and the effective day will be April the third. And I, like I said, I appreciate everything the board has done throughout these challenging three years here. And I have more opportunity to talk a little bit more as we get closer to my, my final days here. Thank you very much.
So when I ask questions, did that publicly announce the end of your show, et cetera?
Yes. Yeah, it's, yeah, like I said, Don and I have been talking and, you know, there's, you know, it's family, you know, there's things, especially when you get the number of years that I've been and I've had, you know, deal with some family issues that I've had, had to deal with. And as you get further on, those things become really, really important to you. So you want to do what you can to make sure that at least you live, you leave off on a positive note for the most part. Appreciate that. Yeah, yes.
Again, we'll echo what happens at the airport every day. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Okay.
All right. And I think our next issue is a closed session. Ms. Collins, if you're reading.
Yes, sir.
Resolution.
Resolution convening a closed meeting on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. We have resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended the act, to discuss the following matters, which are specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code sections referred to below. Number one, personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, performance, salaries or resignation of employees of the authority as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the act. And number two, consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding actual or probable litigation and legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven of the act. May I have a motion, please?
Hello, I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Perrier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Chalzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mataschio?
Aye.
We'll go ahead and do our normal about five minutes, reminding you not to discuss any business whatsoever. And so we'll reconvene in a few minutes.
We have to wait for the lady to say it's okay. Oh, okay. Yes, please read that. Thank you.
We're ready to come out of closed session. Resolution certifying a closed meeting on January 12, 2023. Whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the 1950 Code of Virginia, as amended, requires certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore upon motion duly made and seconded, be it resolved that the authority hereby certifies that to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, number one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting; and number two, only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the authority. May I have a motion, please?
Someone.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Perrier.
Hi.
Mr. White.
Hi.
Ms. Chudzinski.
Hi.
Mr. Mitaschew.
Hi. Thank you very much. Is there any new business?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
That's your shego.
Yes, indeed.
Anyone out? Anyone online? Check the hallway, please.
Oh, by the way, I have a joint plan of business.
Okay. All right. With no further business, I will call the January meeting of the Board of Commissioners to a close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, everybody.
All right. Of course, the actual thing is put your seat belts on tight.